Good evening, I think we will get our forum underway. My name is Mary Struford and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters and a trained and certified League of Women Voters moderator. I have the pleasure of moderating this evening's forum and on behalf of the League of Women Voters Duluth, I welcome you all. We thank the One Roof Community Housing for sponsoring, for cosponsoring and providing the use of this space, as well as the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation for participating with their stability project. And thanks to PAC TV for their assistance in filming tonight's forum. The League of Women Voters is pleased to present this general issue pre-election forum for the third district and at-large Duluth School Board candidates. Thank you candidates for your willingness to participate in local government and in these forums, and thank you all for attending. At-large candidate Alana Oswald sends her regrets this evening, she is unable to attend, and you are invited to contact her if you have any questions or concerns that you would like to discuss with her. At this point, I would ask you all to turn off your cellphones. The League of Women Voters believes that an informed citizenry is the foundation of effective democracy. The League is open to membership for men and women who are interested in nonpartisan civic participation. The League of Women Voters Duluth believes in creative and innovative policies and practices are forged out of diverse points of view and diverse perspectives are necessary for responsible and representative decision-making. Let us acknowledge our commitment to welcome and facilitate diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of our work. We are dedicated to including people from a mix of abilities and backgrounds in all our activities. For more information, check out our website at www.lwbduluth.org. You can also pick up membership information and forms on your way out or speak directly with members attending tonight's event which are pretty much identifiable by our League of Women Voter pins. And we encourage you all to please exercise your right to vote in the election on Tuesday, November 5th, a week from today. Because the League of Women Voters has always structured its forums in a way that promotes civility, this is a civility-certified event. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Kathryn Lenz from the Civility Project.
Thank you. This evening, you received some materials from Speak Your Piece, the Civility Project. One is the green sheet with the nine tenets of civility and the other has the expectations of you, the audience member at this forum. You may keep these or you can turn them back into the table and we'll reuse them. Speak Your Piece, the Civility Project is an initiative of the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation and the League of Women Voters Duluth. The Foundation and the League of Women Voters Duluth would like to thank in advance the candidates and you as audience members for your cooperation.
Thank you Kathryn. Before we move on, I'd also like to introduce Stacy DeRoche, if you'd like to just stand up and just so people know who you are. She is with the PTSA Council and they are also aiding in tonight's forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I welcome all of you. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization that works at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a League do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed at tonight's forum are those of the participating candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters Duluth. And additionally, LWV sponsorship of this forum is not a League endorsement of any individuals participating. At this time, I would like to introduce our school board candidates. From the third district, at the far end, is Lauren Martel and next to him is Paul Sandholm. And then at-large candidate is John Schwetman. And Alana Oswald is running in the at-large position as well. Our forum tonight will begin with the candidates giving a two-minute opening statement followed by questions. We will start with the questions solicited and vetted by our organizing committee. These will be followed by questions from the audience members and questions received at the LWV Duluth website as time allows. Candidates who are not given the questions in advance, each candidate will be given up to one and a half minutes in which to provide their response. The questioning round has been set up so that each candidate will be asked questions in a rotating order. The order in which candidates will respond was determined at random and will rotate the responses throughout the evening. We would like to encourage audience members to submit questions of their own. Index cards are provided at the door and if you raise your hand, somebody will provide you with a card and if you need a pen or a pencil. Please print your questions on the card. If your question is illegible, it will not be asked, so write legible please. Volunteers, when you have your question ready, just raise it and a volunteer will pick it up. All submitted questions will be assessed for clarity and bias. Those that fall into the same general category will be consolidated. This will allow us to cover many topics as possible in the time allotted. Questions that are deemed unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. All questions become property of the League of Women Voters. After the questioning round is completed, each candidate will be allowed a one-minute summary statement prior to the end of the forum. So now, the candidates will begin by providing their introduction statements and we are going to begin with Mr. Sandholm.
Good evening, and League of Women Voters and everybody present, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about our school board and the issues in this upcoming school board race. My name is Paul Sandholm, I am a retired teacher from ISD 709. I taught for 20 years across the district and the past two years as a substitute where I've had the opportunity to get into every building and at every grade level across the district. So with that experience, I feel I have a pretty good feel for all of our buildings, the needs in our buildings, for our students, for our teachers, and for each of the individual schools. I want to be a strong advocate, and I am a strong advocate, of public education. I think it's very important to our community and to the youth in our community in their opportunity to learn and grow.
Good evening, thanks for coming out. My name is Lauren Martel, I've lived in Duluth for about 28 years now. I run a small business and my late wife was a teacher. I'm running for the board because I believe our school district can do better than it has over the past dozen years or so. There are many good things we can build on, but I am concerned about a few things, especially the mood of the public at the moment and particularly in the center of the city. Our school district is currently spending over $14,000 a year to lease space for early childhood education in the old Washington School right across the street here. And meanwhile, the central campus has been sitting empty now for eight and a half years and losing money. And I've heard many people express quite a lot of concern about the management of money by our school district. And it's going to be one of my high priorities to try to allay the public's fears about the decisions that have been made. I want to make better decisions, I want to fix some of these troubles, and I want to regain the public's trust. It's going to be very, very high priority for me if and when I get on the school board. So again, I'm hoping that we can use this time, and sorry if I'm stumbling a bit, but there was something going on here in front of me, so it kind of threw me off as well. But hopefully, we can use this evening to explore some of the solutions to problems. I'm hoping for that, I hope we can have a really good discussion tonight. And thanks again for coming out.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you all for being here. My name is John Schwetman, the candidate for Duluth School Board at-large. My opponent is Alana Oswald, and I really wish she could be here tonight. I know it would be a more informative session for everybody present if you could see both of us up here together, so it's regrettable, and I do genuinely wish her a speedy recovery. About two years ago, the Duluth for Education is a committee of parents and educators and community members that got together to campaign in favor of local operating levy increases to provide our district with better funding, supplementing funding that comes per student from St. Paul. We knew we had to get together because I had been involved in this committee five years earlier and we passed a five-year operating levy. So we were concerned that if nothing happened, if the voters didn't come together in support of it, we would actually lose that levy money. And so our committee got together, we formed a campaign plan, and we went out to the committee and argued in favor of a tax increase, which isn't always what people want, but because we made the case for all the good things happening in our schools, we actually won at the second level. I'm very proud of the work that we did there a year ago and five years earlier and happy to have chaired the committee a year ago. I came into this with the belief that the most equitable education our students in Duluth are going to get is going to be the one that they receive from our public schools. And so I'm really committed to advocating for public schools and continuing to fight for this incredible institution that we put together over the years. I've lived in Duluth for 20 years, moved here to teach at the University of Minnesota Duluth where I continue to teach in the English department, and I've raised two children in ISD 709 schools from before kindergarten because they were in early childhood family education. A wonderful program and a really great way to address needs of very young children. So I've been impressed by the dedicated teachers and staff and I'm really devoted to continuing to work with them and providing good education by empowering them to act on their training and to continue to do the good work they're doing in our classrooms. Thank you.
You can talk to that one because you're going to be next. At this time, we will go into the question and answer period, and each candidate will have a minute and a half to address the questions. The first question is, what factors do you think should go into redrawing of district boundaries?
So this is a really important general issue because if you look at the allocation of students across the district, you find that there are imbalances. Currently, the eastern side schools have much higher, somewhat higher student-teacher ratios than the western side schools, and schools like Condon Park and Lester Park have very, very high classrooms, like numbers of students in the classroom. And the buildings are having trouble accommodating all the students. So this is very, very important work that's going to also cause a lot of unhappiness potentially because it involves telling people that their kid was in one school one year, they may have to move to a different school the next year. So very important, and anticipating these concerns, soliciting community inputs, soliciting input from experts who've done this type of work in other districts, and coming up with a plan that will best address the needs of staffing, distribution of students, and resources in individual buildings.
Next would be Mr. Martel.
Okay. Again, sorry I stumbled a bit, we were having some technical problems before. I just, I think first of all, it does bear mentioning that we ran up a bill of half a billion here that was supposed to right-size our schools and they were supposed to be perfectly placed for 30 years. So I think it is somewhat disheartening that we're in this position where some schools are barely half full and some are busting at the seams. We have to make some kind of adjustments to that, obviously we have to try, but as Mr. Schwetman says, it's fraught with danger. Just because you draw a new line on a piece of paper doesn't mean that anyone's going to send their kids where you tell them to, and we, you know, we have a competitive marketplace. So we have to be very careful about this, we need as much input as possible. I do definitely want to hold off until I'm absolutely certain that the new superintendent has some input into this. I don't think it's right to just sort of get this thing in motion and then put a new person at the helm because it is fraught with risk. But we have a situation, the superintendent last year said in the boardroom that we had 668 children in the Lincoln Park Middle School and we had 613 in Congdon. And he said at the rate we're going, we're going to have more students in Congdon than the Western Middle School. And Congdon has a capacity of 600 students and the Western Middle School has 1,200. Obviously, that's a problem that we have to deal with.
Well, I do agree, there's a lot of issues here that the community needs to be part of and have input in. At the beginning of the campaign, one of the things I was promoting and I still promote or advocate for is that we need to promote those positive things in our schools, whether it's language opportunities at elementary schools or scholarship opportunities at high schools, and be willing to bus kids across the district or to the schools that they're willing to attend. That being said, there are numbers issues and boundary line issues, and if we do look at these changes and the community agrees or understands these changes, we probably need to look at things like grandfathering, you know, there are issues involved. So maybe students that are already in a school, they get grandfathered into finishing at that elementary, so they're not forced to change elementary schools that they've started Things like that and other issues that connect to this, I think again, we've got to have community input, community meetings, and it probably is a good idea to get some input from our new superintendent too. This isn't something that's going to be decided, I think, in a short period of time.
Thank you. Mr. Martel is next. The second question is, what changes, if any, would you make in support of staffing? What changes, if any, would you make in supportive staffing?
Well, one problem of course, and I hear it often, that we've lost, because of a bunch of problems, there's not enough teacher development money available, but there's also just not enough support staff in the schools in general. I hear that complaint quite a bit. There's, in modern school districts, there's just so many issues anymore, there's so many mental health issues, et cetera, and the complaint is from the podium, often articulated from the podium, I should say, in the boardroom, is that there's just simply not enough support staff. The class sizes are too big and, you know, that's another real issue, but everything's coming down to finances. Everybody knows what we need to do, and all these people come up to the podium, they express what they need, and everybody knows it, but we don't have the money to provide all those services that will help our staff. So, you know, at the base of it, we've really got to get our finances more under control. I would like to put a grant writer on staff, a professional grant writer, I don't know why we haven't done that yet. We've got to get more proactive about finding revenue, we can't keep going to the tax base either, but we do have to find the money and we need to allocate it where it needs to go to help staff.
Okay, next is Mr. Sandholm.
Can I get a...
No, sure. You're right.
Can I get it correct, supportive staff or support of...
Supportive staff.
Supportive staff, like our paras and other service within the schools. There are issues out there, but sadly, it's kind of a job opportunity issue, or there's just so many other job opportunities. I think the schools now are feeling the pinch where it's hard to find people to fill in these positions. So if we can look at some pay raises or something else that, you know, will draw people in and make better aware of people that these opportunities are out there and that they can contribute to the schools and be helpful in the schools, again, whether it's as a para or some other service within the building. There, again, there's challenges going forward there. I see the job postings and sometimes they get posted and reposted and even reposted that they just can't find enough people to fill these positions. So it's a concern, I really feel that there are big issues with this going forward and we've got to come up with some ideas, whether it's training, greater awareness in the community for our young people that might be looking for jobs, that they're capable of being trained and filling these positions, whether they're high school graduates or even college students that maybe are looking for a part-time job.
I know that the microphone's popping a little bit on the peas, so maybe if it's okay, I'll just talk really loud to avoid the pops, if that's okay, sorry, for now. So yeah, I've talked to some members of the supportive staff. I'm happy that I was able to receive an endorsement from the union of ASME, which is the union of the paraprofessionals in the district, and yeah, I think the supportive staff does really amazing work. It's important to remember that when a student goes to school in the morning, it's likely the first person they see in the building, other than the kids, is a paraprofessional. And when they leave in the evening, it's another paraprofessional who's going to be the last face as they go out the door. The work they're doing for the district is really important and they're doing a really great job overall. And I think, I think they need all the support they can get. There have been subtle moments in the past when paraprofessionals felt like they didn't get a voice, when they weren't listened to, when there was a policy change. And I'm very, I'm aware of one that came up in their screening when there was a training, Alice training for teachers only and the paraprofessionals weren't involved in that, and they felt that that was, they noticed that oversight. So if I were to suggest changes in supportive staffing, I'd want to see the numbers be adequate to the job, the important work they're doing, but also I want to be sure that people like me, if I'm on the school board or in the administration, are ready to listen to their very important perspective they have to offer to what our students, how our schools are dealing with the students.
Thank you. John, you will start the next question.
Sure, and if it's okay, if you can hear me, I'll just go, micless.
No, a whole micless. What are your thoughts about moving versus retention of principals, especially in the grade schools? So that's moving or retention or leaving them in their grade schools for a longer amount of time.
Okay, well, that is a question that I have, I'll be honest with you, I have not considered that before. That's the kind of thing that we hire a superintendent, assistant superintendent, really to take care of, and that's really going to be their call. My guess is if I talk to them, they're going to say it's going to depend very much on many factors, including the nature of the community, of students in the school, and the personality of the principal involved in that. So to kind of go with, I don't have the training of a superintendent or assistant superintendent, but my sense is they're going to really evaluate on a case-by-case basis. There are advantages to having a long-term principal there for a long time in terms of community, but there's a danger if that person is so entrenched that they've left their successor without a really great place to start. And there are legitimate reasons to move principals and assistant principals from one school to the next. Sometimes it'll be self-motivated, sometimes it'll be because their skills are needed in other schools. So I don't have a really specific take on it, and my understanding is that's not some of the school board's going to be really deciding directly, it's going to be hiring the people who do make that very important judgment call about staffing leadership within a school building.
Thank you. Mr. Martel, you're next.
Do you want the microphone or not? Oh, I'll try to clear my throat here and speak louder. I wish I could just repeat everything John just said. I've never really thought about it specifically before either, and that is a decision that's made by administrative staff. You know, you can make the argument either way, and as John said, it's going to be a case-by-case basis. I've seen many cases where the principal has just been beloved and sort of becomes almost the embodiment of the school, and that can be a great thing and make everyone very comfortable. On the other hand, as John also pointed out, sometimes that can hold things from making necessary, hold things back from making necessary changes. So, you know, it would have to be a case-by-case basis and hopefully, the school board, and the school board hires a good superintendent, the superintendent is responsible for administrative control, so hopefully the administration staff makes some good decisions along those lines. And, you know, those things are very, very important, no question about it, and can sometimes be contentious, but very, very good question, wish I had a better answer for it.
Thank you. Mr. Sandholm.
This is, I suppose technically not a school board issue. It is, these decisions are usually made by the superintendent and I think he has, my understanding is that he has the luxury in making those decisions if he chooses to move people. And sometimes, you know, the public has a right to ask or, you know, question, is that, you know, why was that move made, or is that a good move? I can say from a teacher standpoint that, you know, sometimes someone's maybe not in the right niche. I've seen teachers that have struggled at the middle level and then, you know, they find an opportunity to get at another grade level and they thrive and they, because I've seen that as a substitute in some of the different buildings I have, and it's really refreshing to see people that get an opportunity to change positions and just really run with it and grow. From a principal standpoint, I mean, I think that sometimes may be the case where a principal is either struggling or hasn't made connections within the building or the community, and, you know, a move might be a good thing, whether they've requested it or not, but this is kind of one of those weird issues, it's not truly a school board issue. I suppose the school board has a right to question some of the decisions a superintendent would make in this regard, but then I think the whole community of parents in that school would have that same opportunity.
Thank you. Next, you will, Mr. Sandholm, you'll be the first on this next question. A lot of conversation about what is wrong with the school district has gone on in the community. What are three things you feel are going well?
Well, one of the things I forgot to say in my opening statement is I like to be a promoter of the good things going on in the school district because there are a lot of good things going on in the school district. I want to be a promoter of the community schools, I think the community school collaborative that's established in Myers Wilkins, Lincoln Park Middle School, and Denfeld High School, the seeds are planted and they're showing some success and they've been positive programs for those buildings. So that's something I think we should look to grow at some of the other elementary schools where there's high need, and truly, you know, even the middle schools and high schools across the district, I think again, it's something that can benefit those schools. Three things. You know, we have excellent teachers across this district, I think that's proven by, you know, that graduating class from Denfeld High School this past year was an impressive bunch of students. I had a lot of those students as kids. Again, the opportunities are there for our high school students to do really cool things, whether it's through robotics or just taking more challenging classes. That's a bunch of kids and certainly from East High School too, that have gone on to great college opportunities. And the third thing, it's escaped me right now, but it'll come back to me, I'm sorry. Thank you, I'm running out of time.
Next is John.
Thank you, yeah. I know that there's a lot of good things happening in our schools, and I know this because part of my work as a candidate is knocking on doors in neighborhoods all across the Duluth school district, and I certainly get a diversity of viewpoints on it, but one common thread is that people are generally supportive of the work that our public schools are doing. And they'll say things like, well, I don't have kids in the schools, but I really still want to see strong public schools in spite of that, and I think that's a really good indicator of the great things that are happening. And so, three things, incredibly dedicated teachers and staff, always, I've had very good personal interactions with them because of when they've taught, teaching my students, my kids, and so I just want to keep celebrating that, and we do have an amazing, amazing cohort of teachers working for the district. I'll repeat a little bit of what Mr. Sandholm said about full-service community schools at Myers-Wilkins, Lincoln Park, and Denfeld. This is a really great program that draws community voices into the school in ways they hadn't been in the school before, perhaps. And from what I've heard, it's had an impact in addressing some of the achievement gap. And then also just great activities and programs for our students, sports, arts, service, speech and debate. I have personal awareness of the Duluth East Robotics Team, and one thing that's really amazing to me about that group is they've gone off, they've used their money to start other robotics teams in the region. So, they're not just building robots, they're actually, in their own ways, they're dedicated to community service.
Thank you. Mr. Martel, you'll be starting on this next question.
He has an answer.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake.
No problem.
Please answer the question, this last question.
Oh, sure. Also, as I go door-to-door, one of the most positive things I hear repeatedly, and there's plenty of criticism I do hear, but they always say, you know, "I don't blame the staff." Don't blame the staff, they've got great staff. And it's the thing that's really kept us in the game, the staff of ISD 709. There's a number of other things that have been very positive, as Paul pointed out, the community collaboratives have been very successful, and I think that they, it would be great to be able to expand that into other schools. And another thing that is positive is just the general volunteerism that I've seen. It's one thing that I've really noticed in all the years that I've been following the school district issues. There's just a lot of esprit de corps, not only with the staff in ISD 709, but there's a lot of cooperation and goodwill from volunteers, et cetera, that give of their time. And it's clear that this town really cares about public education. That really comes through if you hang around the school district at all.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Martel. Financial issues are among the greatest challenges facing the school district. What experience would you bring to the board that would prepare you for the, that would prepare you for the budget oversight role required of board members?
Well, I've had kind of an interesting journey here. I was like everyone else, I just simply voted for every referendum, and then, when our school district decided to make a large investment, I had some questions about it. I started to attend meetings. I've been attending meetings for several years now, business committee meetings particularly. And so, I've been following the finances of the district for several years. I wrote the report for the state auditor's office on the red plan. It's, in fact, in the public library under my name, if you would like to look at it. I wrote a regular column in one of the local alternative papers about the school district for several years. And I've been following the numbers and been following the finances for a long time. We've made some bad moves here, frankly, but I think there's a number of things that we can do to mitigate those moves. I would like to be able to get in there and take a look at some of it. I particularly would like to look at the money that we're still drawing out of the general fund to pay for buildings. I think there's some things we may be able to do there to force a bailout from the state. I would like to look at that a little more closely. I do think I bring some knowledge to that, that would be very valuable.
Next is Mr. Sandholm.
Yeah, this is a challenging one. I have served on two boards in the past. I served on the AYSA Board, and there was a financial oversight responsibility with that board. I currently serve on our homeowners association board, and there's a financial oversight and responsibility that goes along with that. Certainly nothing quite the size of a school district budget. You know, I think it's really important that the school district hire, you know, the best people they can that are educated, highly educated in these areas, and that they are able to educate and share that information appropriately with the school board and, you know, encourage the school board members to, you know, understand everything that's going on there. And I guess, you know, if I end up on the school board, I would try to take that time to sit down with the people that would, you know, help me understand and help educate the community in that role. You know, and it really, we really get down to education funding in the state of Minnesota. The governor did try to make some changes earlier this spring, the legislature didn't go along with it, but that's probably one of the biggest issues we're dealing with going forward, is maybe looking at, you know, some new funding formulas or rearranging that. About two-thirds of an education budget comes from the state, twenty-five percent comes from, twenty-five, twenty-seven percent from the local community, and the rest is from the federal portion. So, these are all things we need to look at.
Thank you.
All right. On financial issues, the question's what experience I bring with me, and I have some experience that I've, in my work. As a teacher at the University of Minnesota Duluth, I have served on very, many, many different kinds of advisory boards and committees, and some of them have dealt with fiscal issues. Not a lot, I'll be honest, but a lot of it about the management of the university is through these boards of faculty and staff and students. So, I do have that, and I have experience on the civil service board for the city of Duluth, which, again, is not directly financial, but which does tangentially deal with some of those issues. I'm also actually a treasurer for a small, tiny, a small professional organization called Pacific Ancient Modern Language Association, and so I work very closely with the director of that organization to go over the books once a year and keep an eye on things. The bulk of my financial experience actually is in campaign work, to be honest. I was temporarily treasurer of the Democratic Federal Labor Party for the seventh senate district, and I have been the campaign treasurer for several candidates for office over the years, including Representative Jennifer Schultz, and that's where most of my financial training has been. Just a brief note on the financial questions, there's really two sides to it. There's the monetary side, and that's where accountants are really helpful, but there's another side that's a little bit more abstract, and it's the side where people explain and talk about budgets and form narratives about how we prioritize money. And I think I have experience, some experience on both of those sides, but those are both really important, and an accountant might not be the person who writes the narrative about how we make budget priorities. So, I'll just put that out there.
Thank you. You'll be starting with the next question as well. What do you see as the role of a school board member in relation to the administration and other school board members?
Right. Yeah, excellent question. The role of the school board member is to serve as the representative of the community, however defined, well, the community of Duluth, and it's a governance role to which the administration of the district is accountable. So, the school board hires a superintendent after a very careful screening process, and then the superintendent maintains a constant line of communication with that school board, explaining decisions made, and, of course, the school board just provides this really valuable oversight role. The school board also, of course, sets the budget, and so that goes back immediately to that previous question. The school board sits down and approves a budget on a regular basis and has that kind of big-picture view of district operations. The role of a school board member with respect to other school board members is to disagree productively, to identify areas of consensus, and also identify where the real disagreements are, and strive towards a consensus if possible, or a constructive disagreement if not. And, of course, the school board member also has a very big obligation to then take some of the kind of more opaque and challenging functionings of the big, complicated organization known as the school district, and make that as clear to the people outside of the administration as they can. So, it's a big role, it's one that I think very seriously, and one that I do hope to take on, depending on how the election turns out next week.
Thank you. Mr. Martel?
Well, it's, you know, it's a very complex relationship. Administration is an informed advisor to the board, but the board ultimately does have a check-and-balance role, and the board is responsible for fiscal control. The superintendent is responsible for administrative control. The board also is elected by the general public, not by the district, but it still represents the district as well. But, it also has, individual board members have to represent their constituents, that's what they're elected to do, and the concerns of their constituents. So, it's a complex role, and obviously, we've had some dissension, I should say, in the school board room over the past few years, and partly that's due to fiscal problems. I tell people all the time, you know, it's like a family that's having some problems, financial problems make those problems worse. So, some of the debates have gotten a bit heated from time to time in the boardroom because of all the stresses that have been around the school district, particularly financially. But at the end of the day, we all have common purpose. We all do want a thriving school district, and we want to try to keep the tax burden under control. We always have to keep that in mind as well.
Thank you. Mr. Sandholm?
Well, I volunteered to run for the Duluth School Board because I believe in community service, and I also believe the community wants to see a productive and functional board, you know, where board members work collaboratively. And again, if there is disagreement, they can disagree respectfully with each other in the boardroom, and, again, have debates that are productive instead of counterproductive. I think, again, the community wants to, you know, see a school board that they can be proud of and/or they can, you know, they're not embarrassed by. I think they want to see a school board that works together, and, again, discusses things with them, not just amongst themselves, but with the community as a whole, to share the issues and work through the issues that they have to decide on a monthly basis.
Thank you. And, Mr. Sandholm, you'll be the first to answer this next question.
Okay.
What resources or programs do you believe need to be enhanced to address the achievement and graduation disparity between our more privileged and less privileged students?
Well, one of the other positive things in the district that I was going to bring up that I ran out of time for, and this is an important one that helps graduation and helps, can help with the achievement gap, and that's our online learning program and the AEO program, the Academic Excellence Online at ALC. This is a program that's helping students graduate from high school. If they get behind, it helps with credit recovery. It's a program that students at Denfeld High School and at East High School are using, and it's a program that's also drawing students into the district from surrounding districts and even from the Minneapolis area. So, that's something that's important. I actually think that with the direction that education's going, it's important that we maybe even look at exploring or explore moving that into the middle school level, too, because, again, online learning is just, a big part of that's the future of education, and I think kids might be more successful with their MCA testing and some of the other testing that they're required to do in the middle school level, where they get more experience of doing those things online. And, again, the community school programs, that can help lift kids up and provide support for those students and those families, so that they can be successful as they're moving through the educational system.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Swed.
All right. So, yeah, the question is which programs need to be enhanced to address the achievement gap? And like Mr. Sandholm said, I think full-service community schools does seem to be doing some good work, and it's only at three schools in the district. It would be tempting to say it would be nice to see that program exist in other schools in the district if possible. There's one caveat, which is that when I talked to Kathy Bogan about that program, she made it very clear that it emerged from the community. And so, for a school board to say, "We should start one at another school," would be a little bit out of the spirit of the program, where it's supposed to emerge from within. So, I would say it'd be nice if those, if full-service community schools could go, existed at other schools with the careful acknowledgement, that would be best if it was generated within, within the community that that school served. I think there's probably room for enhancement of affirmation of diverse cultures within the schools through curriculum and through activities after school. There's a lot, there's a lot to build on there, but certainly there's room for more. And I really, I'm serious about curriculum. Students respond to curriculum, and they recognize when the curriculum, or I think of this as literature professor, when it's a culture that they do not identify with as their own. It'd be nice to see that they have that, with, of course, consultation from the teachers. Mental health is a big part of achievement gap, and it's an area of, I'd say, it's an area of concern around the state, and it's nice to see continuation of the good partnerships that are addressing mental health, and, of course, most importantly, better funding from the state overall to improve these resources.
Thank you. Mr. Martel?
Well, as everyone's pointed out in the community collaborative, that sort of effort is very beneficial, as much support as you can put in place. But if you're asking me something specific, one thing that I really turn my eyes to is career technical education. There's an eighty-nine percent graduation rate in that program. There's a great reawakening of career technical education in the country right now. I think it opens up all kinds of doors for people. One thing that I like about it is kids sometimes need a couple of chances to find their way, and with career technical education, they don't have to lay out quite so much money, they can kind of move around a bit. My nephew's a perfect example. He went down one path he didn't like, he went back and retooled with robotics, and now he's flying around the world making a lot of money. So, I think it's opening up a lot of doors for people, and I would like to focus a little more on that program. I'm very interested in taking a look at the Secondary Tech Center, that's still sitting empty up on the central campus. Those buildings are only twenty-three and twenty-five years old. I think we can write some grants to update the security on those buildings, and I don't think it would take a lot to restart them up. And I think that's one place where we can open up a lot of opportunities for students.
Thank you. Mr. Martel, we'll be starting with you on this next question. Transparency with regard to board proceedings has been a concern of late. Do you believe this is a problem, and if so, how would you propose to address it?
Yes, I believe it is a problem. And there was some debate around the hiring of the assistant superintendent, and I do believe that information about his background should have been shared with the full board. And I think we do have to open up those lines of communication better. And I also think that we have to make some systemic changes in the way the board operates. For years, I've called for opening up the agenda meetings. I don't think those are conducive to a board that is fully informed and also able to get along together. There's, it sort of pinches out information from some board members. Only two of the board members are allowed in the room for their own meeting. I don't think that's proper, everything's off the record. Those are very important discussions about district priorities, and I believe those meetings should be opened up and on the record, just like the city council holds their agenda sessions. I think that would be very helpful. I just, I do believe that for years, there's been a problem that way, and it's caused a lot of disagreement among board members. I can give you many examples, I've been following it for many years, and it has been a perennial problem in the room, and we have to do a better job of making the whole process more transparent and allow more information flow between all board members out in the public.
Thank you. Mr. Sandholm?
And this one sometimes puzzles me, because I wonder if it's more perception than it is a reality. I am concerned if there's transparency issues coming out of administration that, you know, the board isn't made fully aware of, and all board members aren't made fully aware of. You know, that's an issue that hopefully, you know, with the hiring of a new superintendent and, you know, just maybe a change of some procedures can rectify. But all the committee meetings are taped and on the district website for public viewing, and all the school board meetings are there also for everybody to take in at their leisure. So, the committees do meet, there are limited numbers- So the committees do meet. There are a limited number of school board members on each committee. Not every school board member has the time to serve on every committee, but those are not closed meetings. They're open meetings to the public and then they're also televised and/or videotaped and they're available for everybody to see. If there are real transparency issues, yes, we need to, as a school board, maybe sit down and go over the procedures that exist at present and then maybe look at things that can help correct any real transparency problems going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Schwedman.
Yes. Well, when I was campaigning for the increases to operating levies a year ago and five years earlier, this is a really important issue because I noticed when I talk to people, if they trusted the district and the district leadership and they tended to support and the community tended to buy in, and if there was distrust, then that gave them an easy out. They could say they supported funding schools, but that they didn't trust the leadership in the school. Fortunately, the majority of people did and we passed the levy at the second level. So transparency is kind of an important element of that. I mean, it is related to a general community trust of the district leadership and of everybody involved. Transparency however, does, is not, it's not necessarily what you think it is. I mean, pure transparency would mean individual access to an incredible amount of information, huge amounts of information. Statutes governing district operations, different budget sources and different complex requirements and details are going into how the district is functioning. Mere transparency means an information overload, an avalanche of information that needs some kind of framing for most of us, probably for school board members too. So transparency is going to come with some of that narrative I was talking about earlier with finances. You're not going to get all the information at once. You're going to get information that is structured around particular narratives, taking district processes and make them intelligible to those of us without accounting degrees or the training that district administrators tend to have. So I think transparency is good, but I want to acknowledge that we're going to be framing that information in very particular ways inevitably.
Thank you. Mr. Schwedman, you will be first with this next question. What do you see as the most important qualities in the next superintendent?
The next, the superintendent search is going to be really important and I know that the community's going to be watching closely as we make this decision as a school board in the spring. The first criterion, in my view, is going to be superintendent who is a clear and avid communicator, who's eager to explain things to the public and who has that, who hopefully has a knack for taking the complexities of the district and making them intelligible to people who don't have the same perspective or training. Secondly, what is the superintendent is a very competent administrator, has a good working relationship with the administration and with the staff in the buildings. And one thing that's also helpful, I think almost all the candidates will have this trait, but experience working with organized employees, i.e. unions. It's one of the most, one of the, one of the big deals about leading the district is that constant negotiation with the bargaining units. I do have labor endorsements and with that comes an acknowledgement that the bargaining table and the collective bargaining is what's best for the employees of the district, but also I believe it's what's best for the students in the district because those unions are advocating for high credentialing levels, for high standards of good workplace conditions and other things that have a very direct bearing on the quality of education our students receive. So if I'm on the school board, I will want to see a superintendent with a decent track record on negotiating in the collective bargaining context.
Thank you. Mr. Martel.
Well, I want a superintendent to have a track record working in a sizable district who's dealt with some real problems, particularly financial problems. And I do want a superintendent that can pull people together, who has a seasoned diplomat. And we were just talking about transparency. I think the superintendent, in many ways, sets that tone. And I do think that we need more transparency to get better public relations out there. This is the tenth time I've been out in eleven years knocking on doors about school district issues, more than anyone else, probably in the history of the city, probably have walked somewhere around a hundred miles. And really, this time, the public's mood is worse than I've ever found it. People have grown very distrustful and disillusioned with districts, the leadership from the district and the transparency around those decisions. They want, they want to be clued in more and we need a superintendent that's going to reach out with an olive branch to the public. We really have to do a better job of bringing the public back in and restoring the faith of the public. And I want a superintendent that has that focus.
Thank you.
Well, it's hard not to echo some of what's already been said and we do need a superintendent that gains the confidence of the community. We also need a superintendent that understands equity and is willing to, you know, work with the school board and the principals across the district in ensuring that our schools are treated fairly and equitably and we can do good things there across the district. Another thing I, from a teacher standpoint, I think it's very important, we have a superintendent that is supportive of the QSC model and the process and the program that's in place right now too, where teachers and administrators and school board members come together and, you know, they're working on issues at, whether it's individual schools or individual grade levels or middle school, high school issues that are kind of specific to those buildings that, again, it's a collaborative effort, kind of like the quality is free model where things are kind of flowing upwards instead of dictated downwards from the top leadership. So yes, transparency, equity and a superintendent that's supportive of the QSC, the quality model for schools.
Thank you. And we will start with you with our next question.
Okay.
Is the racial, ethnic and gender makeup of our teachers becoming more like that of the students they serve? And if not, what can be done?
Well, that's a challenge, I think, probably for every school and every school district in the state of Minnesota. You know, it would be great if we had a more diverse population of teachers, educators to draw from to teach in our schools across the state of Minnesota because I think it's, most everybody in the room is probably aware of that the Minnesota achievement gap is, is an issue. That being said, I had the opportunity just last week to get into a Denfeld classroom and I was co-teaching with a, with a young woman that she just had a way with those kids and it was, it was just great to see that, you know, we have a teacher of color that's in our classrooms, working with kids and, you know, very, very productive and very successful in the way she was getting these kids to stay on task and to put phones away and to, you know, to do the things they needed to do that day. I think again, that's going to, one of those challenges that to some degree maybe falls on our colleges and universities to, you know, turn out and put out a more diverse population of teachers for, for all of the schools across the state of Minnesota.
Thank you. Mr. Schwedman.
It is my sense that the makeup, the racial, ethnic and gender makeup of teachers is not quite where it could be and in terms of being reflective of the student population, the student needs. Two places I might look, kind of to address that, one is that the teaching programs themselves, looking at the demographics of people seeking teaching degrees, I think you'll find that it tends to be similar to the makeup of teachers in your average Minnesota school district. There are ways, of course, to make those teaching programs more appealing to a more ethnically diverse group of potential teaching students. And of course, improving conditions for teachers and getting us away from what we have now as a teacher shortage would be really probably a positive step in that direction. Of course, that's not something the school board has a lot of control over, so of course, it would want to put, pay a lot of attention then to the ethnic, gender and racial makeup of the candidate pool when it hires teachers. And I think it's doing things like that, but clearly it's a big task. One thing I will point out though, that one area of possible positive element is that we do have an Ajibwe immersion program at Lowell Elementary School and that has undoubtedly changed the ethnic makeup of the teaching staff in accordance with that. It's required really, the hiring of people who are, who know Ajibwe culture and who know the language. And so I think that is one, the one type of program that could have some promise in addressing this very real and important issue.
Mr. Martel.
I don't know exactly what the numbers are, but I know I hear complaints all the time that it's not happening fast enough. It certainly is a problem to some degree. I don't know if I should, it is a problem, but I don't know if it's a problem that can be quantified strictly through numbers. Obviously, there is great benefit to having a teacher in a classroom that can relate to a particular ethnic group. And we have to move towards making that more of a reality in the schools of ISD 709. I know that there's some programming out there that is making that a little bit easier. Can't remember the names of them. Been struggling to remember here. I think it was Pathways to Teaching or something like that. That's making, taking some of the barriers down so that teachers of color can get into teaching more easily. We have to, we have to try to find ways like that to make it happen. I do think there's great benefit from that. But again, in Duluth Public Schools, I've heard that it's not happening as quickly as some would like and we have to try to step it up a bit.
Thank you. We have another question from the audience and we're going to start with Mr. Schwedman on this. How would you address the need for smaller classes and adequate space for the number of students in a class?
I mean, the answer's going to be more, better funding. Unfortunately, again, the school board can only do so much about that. The funding is really going to be decided primarily in St. Paul by our legislature because that's where the bulk of funding for our schools come from. And so I would be, if I was the school board, I'd be eager to testify before the legislature in favor of better, a better funding formula for Minnesota schools. That's really the big overarching issue. In the meantime, the school board does have some discretion to raise local levies and of course, the citizens have the power to do so as well and that money can address some of the issues there. The other thing that's already happening is the boundary study. It's going to distribute the load differently so that at least there'll be more, there'll be an even spread of students across the classes. But I do recognize this is a big problem. And as far as I can tell, it's a, it's a problem without a really clear and easy solution in the short term until we see better funding, a really doubling, redoubling of commitment to the funding of public education at the state level that we once had back when I was, back when my parents were children, back when I was younger too. So I think that if we can get, generate community buy-in and generate more supportive environment for school funding at the state level, we're going to be able to take a better crack at this problem of over and excessive class enrollments at this local level.
Thank you. Mr. Martel.
Well, you know, obviously there's been some disinvestment from the state, but there also has to be good local decisions made. You know, you can't make an investment that doesn't pan out. We're, this year, fiscal year twenty, we're supposed to have four point five million dollars extra in the budget from all the efficiencies of this big consolidation project. Smoke and mirrors. Never happened, not there. In fact, it's hurt the budget. So there is a certain responsibility on the local level and, you know, sometimes that's sort of glossed over, but I do think we need to do a better job of making local decisions, particularly with money. This is not going to be easy to climb out of now. We have a big problem with, with our facilities. They are very unevenly filled and unfilled across the district. It's going to be sort of difficult here to get people online, moving where we want them to move here to try to solve this problem. And that's not the only thing that's going to solve it. At the end of the day, you have to have more teachers. I mean, you have to, you have to have the money to hire teachers to make classes smaller. And right at the moment, we don't have the money and it's a real struggle. We've got to manage our money better and we've got to try to get it into those, into the schools to achieve that because it also helps us on a competitive level in the marketplace.
Thank you. Mr. Sandholm.
Well, there's kind of delicate balance or dance or challenge going on here with finding the balance for the right-sized classroom. You could argue that with the boundary study, you know, we'll have a better idea of maybe some of these moves that can be made to, you know, distribute some of the student population amongst the schools. But then, again, that balance, you've got to look at, there are schools with high poverty and high need students where maybe they have classes already of twenty students or twenty-two students at the elementary level in a classroom and that's not a bad thing. Whereas some of the other schools that are twenty-five to thirty and I've seen those classes thrive because again, it's a different population. So I think it's, I don't think it's the right thing to say that, or fair to say that every elementary class size should be exactly the same, you know. I think some of it does hinge on, again, the needs of that school and maybe, again, the equity issues that might exist with the students and the families that are part of those schools. Yes, we've, we passed an operating levy to put teachers in the classrooms and I think again, the community should, you know, push that maybe next year, we get some additional teachers in the classroom. Hopefully that can happen.
Thank you. The next question will start with Mr. Martel. What support systems are needed to assist children who are experiencing homelessness?
Well, I, you know, again, I think it's, it comes back to many of the things we've already spoken about and it just, we need, we need counselors and obviously there's a lot of mental health issues. One thing that I, that I personally regretted when we shut down the magnet school system before the red plan was that any child that was in transition, wherever they were around the city, if they kept moving around, they kept being bused to the same school. And I thought that was a great thing so that child would have that one bit of continuity and stability in his or her life. And I sort of regret that that was kind of thrown out with the bathwater. It'd be wonderful to be, be able to bring something like that back in at some point, but you know, it comes down to providing security to that child somehow, a sense of well-being and that, you know, just relates to the overall tone that you're creating in the district. And I, you know, I will say that district staff is really quite concerned about the climate in the schools. I think they've done a good job, but that particular demographic is a tough challenge and we have a lot of homeless kids in our schools and we have to deal with them as well as we can.
Thank you. Mr. Sandholm.
Well, this gets back to the community school program and, you know, its ability to, you know, work with those families and find support systems for those families with the social workers. That would be part of the community school collaborative. And, you know, we are providing three meals a day for some of these students in our classroom or in our, in our buildings. You know, they get, they come in early for breakfast. They obviously all get lunch and then there's after-school programming for, for these students and the families of these students to, you know, make sure they get fed again and then are involved in other activities, whether it's computers or reading program or even just sometimes recreational or sports programs or things that are fun. You know, the schools can't solve all these problems. This is an issue that the school district, I think, needs to work closely with the city and the county on where there's social work and social support services involved. And sometimes just the big challenge is identifying these students and these families and helping them and lifting them up so they can, you know, find a better, better life in a home where some security and an opportunity for success, so.
Thank you. Mr. Schwedman.
I think there are current programs in the district. I know that- I know that Myers- Wilkins has a kind of full-term dedicated person, Stacy Ochterhoff, who just deals with this particular, a population of students at that particular school, and I know that there probably aren't the same level of resources at other schools, and all the schools in the district have students in this population who are homeless. I know that we have current programs that are federally mandated, such as school lunch, reduced lunch, and that's really important, and I'm happy to hear that the district extended that through the summer for this population, other populations of students who need it, and also, of course, breakfast is super important, and the district is already providing some of that. These are definitely programs that could probably use more with the resources permitted. After-school programs are super important for kids who are not going home to a stable home, and those, again, do exist, but there's undoubtedly room for improvement. And actually, there's a district policy. This is really important. Homeless kids may actually be transient kids, and they may not be in the same school boundaries from one month to the next. I was happy to learn that the district actually does acknowledge that, and it does allow kids to stay attached to one school even when they technically move outside the boundaries. That's super important because it does give kids, make the school at least, a source of continuity. One other issue, particularly for kids who are homeless, is a big one that probably could use more development, which is transit equity. Transportation for kids, especially for after-school programs, is a real problem, and I hope that there are creative ways to address it in the future.
Thank you. At this time, I'm, we're going to make this a one-minute question, timers. Okay? And we will start with Mr. Schwettman. School board members are elected to represent the people in ISD 709. How will you strive to hear from all voices, especially those who are underrepresented in our community?
Well, I've started that work a little bit because of the necessities of campaigning for office. I mean, that's, campaigning for office requires all of us to get out into the community and talk to people, and talk to a wide range of people by going actually straight up to their house, knocking on their door and talking to them. So I have gained valuable experience in that, and that's experience I actually already have because I've done other campaign work. So after an election, if elected as school board, I would want to continue some of that, maybe not going straight to people's doors, but certainly getting out there in the community, attending a careful selection of community meetings. There are many excellent organizations already in the community that I look forward to getting to know better and that I've already got some connections with. But I understand that there are communities in our cities that won't necessarily feel as comfortable coming forward and advocating for themselves as other communities. I understand that it really is incumbent upon school board members and others to reach out to those communities and really to present themselves for, you know, questioning and for discussion. You know, can I take the initiative? I'm ready to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Martel.
Well, I agree with that. It is incumbent on the school board member to do that, and I think I will just drive up to some of my neighborhoods in my district occasionally from time to time and park and knock on a few doors now and then. But you also have to spend a lot of time out in the schools. I intend to do that, meeting with as many people as I can. There are some groups that, you know, are going to take more effort to reach, and I think we all have to make that effort as a school board member, but I also really feel as though my constituents are very, very important too, and I've heard it over and over again in the central part of the city that they feel that people have not listened to them well enough, and I'm going to do that.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Sandholm.
Well, I would say I would like to keep up my presence in the schools as a substitute teacher because that does give me the opportunity to talk to teachers that are making home visits, counselors that are working with these students and these families that are often in poverty and/or, again, these are the ones that are underrepresented. They are not probably the doors we're knocking on, and they're probably not, you know, the people that are going to come forward to, you know, seeking us out. You know, I think in some respects, you know, the school board members, if they really want to touch base with these people, they've got to be in the schools, they've got to talk to the people that are working with these families in poverty and these families that are underrepresented. They've got to talk to them, if not daily, on a weekly basis or a monthly basis just to have those connections. And, again, making those connections with the administrators too in those buildings to have that help. I'm sorry. I guess I need the microphone.
Thank you. At this time, we will ask each candidate to give a one-minute closing statement, and we will begin with Mr. Sandholm.
I will thank you again for the opportunity to speak here tonight to League of Women Voters and to PAC TV. Maybe that's why I got so tied up earlier because I remember my PAC TV bit was a struggle. I'll smile at that one. Anyway, there are a lot of issues that we've discussed throughout this campaign at all the forums. We've had a lot of different questions here tonight, and that's refreshing. Again, I'd like to represent District 3 and the community as a whole on the school board to see our school district grow and to build on the good things that we have going on in the district that are helping families, that are helping students graduate, that are helping students succeed, and hopefully, you know, close that achievement gap. So, again, I thank you for this opportunity this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Martel.
Well, I had a closing statement, but I think I'm going to change it a bit and just bring up one more issue that I'd want to mention. The investment we made projected an enrollment of 9,600 students, and we're at 8,200. That's been a big problem with our revenue as well, and you have to look at it from two directions, obviously. We have to provide education that is high-quality for the students themselves, but we also have a very competitive marketplace. There's 45 other educational venues operating in the area now. There's open enrollment, there's online education, and homeschooling's really taken off, but it's, so it's a very competitive marketplace, and we have to get competitive in that marketplace. That's going to require really good resource use, and we have to focus on that. Essentially, it's sort of like a business in a way. We definitely have to bring in the students again, so we have to get something competitive out there that families want.
Mr. Schwett.
All right. Well, once again, I regret that Alana Oswald couldn't be here tonight, and I do, again, wish her the best. I hope that she has a speedy recovery, and I know that this is a very well-informed group that's going to go out and get lots of information about what the at-large race looks like. I'm a relative newcomer to Duluth. I've only been here for 20 years. Nonetheless, this is the place I've had the longest of any place in my life. This is my home. I'm very, very devoted to this community. My kids were born and raised here, and I'm very devoted to the future of Duluth Public Schools. There is no more equitable way to educate kids than through the public school system, and I am ready to go to bat for it and really do whatever I can to give us the strongest public school system we can have. I struggled to decide to run for this. I talked to many people in the community, and they encouraged me to run, and I'm building my campaign on the work that I did to address local operating levies, work that I'm proud of and work that I hope to continue doing as a school board member. Thank you all for being here tonight.